Welcome to the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals Meeting of September the 10th, 2020. The regular Chair has suffered an accident and I am stepping in as Chair this evening. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Ellen McKay.
Here.
Dell Smythe.
Here.
Stephanie Iker.
Here.
Dave Hale.
Here.
Monica Emmerton.
Here.
Jonathan Lang.
Here.
Jackie Salvina.
Here.
Skylar Quinn.
Here.
Tanya Hickock is excused, thank you.
Next order on the agenda, or next item on the agenda is minutes. We have minutes for Thursday, September the 10th, 2020. Are there, let's see, motion for, could I have a positive motion for approval, please?
Mrs. Stephanie, so moved.
So this is, takes precedence over, all right. So moved by Mr. Smythe and seconded by Mr. Quinn. Mr. Smythe?
No changes to the minutes, I recommend approving them.
Anything, Mr. Quinn?
No changes.
Okay, anybody else have any changes or corrections? Seeing none, is there any objection to the minutes being approved? Seeing none, the minutes are approved and we'll move on to special order of business. Are there any disclosures this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. There's one item on the consent agenda, it's a resolution, Resolution 2020-010 related to case 2020-0111. May I have a positive motion for approval of the consent agenda? Ms. Iker? And is there a second? And Ms. Emmerton, seconds. So is there any objection to approval of the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved and no appearance requests this evening, no unfinished business, nothing on the regular agenda, so we'll move on to the public hearings. The first case in public hearings is a variance case and the order of business for a variance case is as follows, the Chair shall introduce the variance and explain the procedure to be followed, so that's me. The variance case number and the name of the applicant shall be read into the record. So the variance case is case 2020-0121, Skippy Boomershine is the applicant. Then the Board shall hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice. The Board shall hear a brief presentation outlining the variance and on conclusion of the staff presentation, Board members and the applicant may then direct questions to the staff through the Chair. The applicant shall have his or her, shall give his or her presentation. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant who must convince the Board by a preponderance of evidence that the variance should be granted. On conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the Board members and the staff may then direct questions to the applicant through the Chair. The hearing shall then be open for public testimony and all persons who testify may be questioned by the Board, the staff, or the applicant. On the conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal. The Board shall proceed to develop oral findings and conclusions with regard to the variance and the disposition of the variance. The staff shall reduce the oral findings and conclusions to writing for subsequent adoption by the Board at a later meeting. And there's the, I have to explain about if someone wants to appeal? I have to let you know about your right of appeal, and we're looking for it, so hang on. So, any person who feels that they need to submit an appeal have 20 days after the decision is made and distributed to appeal to Superior Court. Okay, so, that's the appeal hearing, yeah, it's not yet. On we go. So we read, okay, yeah, so will the staff please describe the sufficiency of notice?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. On August 28th, 2020, a total of 193 public hearing notices were mailed in accordance with the procedures of Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Chapter 3, Subsection 020H Notice. Thank you.
Is there any objection to the sufficiency of notice? Seeing none, then will the staff please present the case?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request for a variance from Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Chapter 7, Subsection 020B9, stream setbacks, to allow covered storage area and fence to encroach no more than 19 feet into a required 25-foot stream protection setback, and to allow a storage shed to encroach no more than 10 feet into a required 25-foot stream protection setback for Furrow Creek. Planning Department has reviewed the application and presents the following findings for the Board's consideration. For Standard A, we do not believe the standard is met. The subject parcel is affected by a perennial stream and its corresponding stream protection setback, but it is not, is not as significant enough of an encumbrance where it denies the owner the ability to place accessory structures within a conforming location. The subject parcel measures 9,346 square feet. The approximate footprint of the existing single-family home is 1,744 square feet, which is approximately 19% lot coverage, according to municipal property records. The size of the backyard portion of the lot excluding the area encumbered by the stream protection setback is approximately 1,806 square feet. The total footprint of the existing accessory structures which encroach within the stream protection setback is approximately 254 square feet. Based upon this evaluation, it appears that there is sufficient area available, approximately 1,552 square feet, in which the existing accessory structures could be relocated to in order to achieve compliance with stream protection setback standards. There are no additional physical circumstances which affect this lot. For Standard B, we believe the standard is not met. The denial of this variance would not deprive the property owner of rights commonly enjoyed by others within the same zoning district, nor would the strict application of code create an undue hardship on the property owner. Accessory structures for use as storage and garden sheds are commonly enjoyed amenities within residential districts. Based upon the area calculations mentioned previously in Approval Criteria A, there does appear to be sufficient area within the subject parcel to accommodate accessory structures such as storage sheds and garden sheds. For standard C, we do not believe the standard is met. This hardship does appear to be self-imposed because the accessory structures were constructed by the current owners after 1985, when the 25-foot stream protection setback was established. As referenced in Approval Criteria A and B, there does appear to be sufficient area within the subject parcel to relocate the existing structures to a conforming location. Therefore, relocating the accessory structures seems to only constitute inconvenience and it is not considered an exceptional or undue hardship. For standard D, we do believe the standard is met. Given the character history and current zoning of the neighborhood, it does, it does not appear at this time that the granting of this variance will adversely affect the use of adjacent properties. Neighboring property owners will retain the ability to make full lawful use of their land. For standard E, the standard is met. The requested variance will not change the character of the R1A zoning district in which the petition site is located. The R1A district is primarily intended for detached single-family dwellings. Granting the stream protection setback encroachment will not permit either a principal or accessory use other than what is already permitted under Anchorage Municipal Code. For standard F, the standard we believe is partially met. It does not appear that these structures by themselves will result in any negative impacts to the health or safety of the people of the municipality. However, it is important to note that the presence of impervious surface within the stream protection setback reduces the ability of precipitation to uniformly infiltrate through, through the soil. Although the footprint of the impervious surface area within the subject parcel is minimal, the cumulative effects of increasing impervious surface area within stream protection setbacks across the municipality has the potential to increase flooding and stormwater surge events due to the decreased natural function of the stream protection setback to slow, treat, and retain stormwater runoff. For standard G, we do believe the standard is met. The standard is not applicable to a detached single-family residence. And standard H, we do not believe that standard is met. The applicant has not shown that encroaching into the stream protection setback is required to make possible a reasonable use of the land. There is sufficient area within the subject parcel that is outside of the required setback where the existing structures could be relocated to in order to achieve compliance. Given this analysis, Anchorage Municipal Code does require that all eight standards be substantially met in order for variance to be granted. The Department finds that standards A, B, C, and H are not met. Standard F is partially met, and standards D, E, and G are met. Therefore, the Department recommends denial of the variance. However, if after a public hearing, the Board finds that all eight standards are substantially met, then approval should be subject to conditions 1, 2, and 3 listed on Page 6 of the staff report. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions, so thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any Board members that have a question for staff?
Dave, I have a question, if I can get on the queue for it.
Dave, yeah, go ahead.
To the Chair, I was just wondering about the 1,800 square feet, 1,806 square feet in the backyard, I was wondering if that included that 10-foot utility easement? Is that easement acreage included in that?
Through the Chair, the 1,800, approximately 1,800 square feet calculation, that utility easement is included within that, given the nature that you can place an accessory structure in a utility easement subject to the approval of the utility companies.
Through the Chair, follow-up, if it, could it, does it need to be a temporary shed? Or could they, could they put a foundation in the easement and put a shed on it?
Through the Chair, it depends on the nature of what's within that utility easement. It's very circumstantial, but if the, in general, if the utility companies have no objection to the placement of a permanent structure within an easement, generally that would be allowed, but it's all subject to the approval of the utility companies, whether or not they have an objection to the placement of that structure.
So if the utility company did not approve it, they would be, have limited acreage back there?
Through the Chair, that's correct.
Thank you.
And Ms. Iker, you had a question?
Thank you, to the Chair, I have three questions. My first question is, the variance request includes a fence and then the covered storage area and the covered shed, but the findings only address the covered storage area and the shed. I'm wondering, does the fence itself need a variance as well, or is that just included for our information?
Through the Chair, the fence does require variance because it is a structure within the stream protection setback. The reason they are lumped together is simply due to the amount of encroachment of those structures. The covered storage area and the fence are tied together so that encroachment is measured one and the same. The shed is not tied to the fence and it's placed further, inset further into the lot, so the amount of encroachment is less.
Thank you, through the Chair, my follow-up question, and this kind of piggybacks onto my first question. Typically, this Board hears requests for variance of structures of additions and houses and, and more substantive stuff than fences and floorless structures. Can you refresh my memory, are all of these encroachments untreated the same as far as the severity? And I noticed that, you know, that the measure in several of the findings is impervious surface coverage. Is that, is that the harm that we're assessing in this? Because some of these seem very temporary in nature or easily movable. Should they be needed to be relocated at a future point in time? And I'm just trying to, if you could please refresh my memory on the impact of the encroachment to your evaluation of the standards, that would be helpful.
Through the Chair, so any structure that is 30 inches or higher in height cannot be placed within any required setback. And then any structure with that 25-foot stream protection setback, there can be no structures placed within it. I did, in my staff report, mention impervious surface area. We don't explicitly restrict impervious surface area in code, it's just the simple nature of the structures that are within it in this case. But any structure that is 30 inches or higher is not allowed to encroach within any required setback. And it's specific to stream protection setbacks, no structure can be placed within a stream protection setback.
Thank you, through the Chair, one final question for staff. Typically, in our packets, we're provided a topography map, I didn't see that in my packet. Could you tell me, is the, the lot in question fairly flat, sloped? What sort of topography are we talking about?
Through the Chair, the topography is quite flat. As with any lot, there's gentle sloping, but it is, it is quite flat. No significant topography is present.
Thank you, through the Chair, I appreciate the staff's answers to my questions.
Anyone else have a question for staff? It's the time in the meeting where you are to give your presentation, you have, you have 10 minutes, and if you want to reserve time for rebuttal, would have to reserve that out of that 10 minutes.
Okay.
Okay, you can, you can start your presentation.
All right. Well, first of all, I would like to thank the Board for listening to us and hearing our case. I appreciate the opportunity to present it, and I thank you for your time and allowing us to do that. I want to make sure that everyone has the paper packets in front of them that we have.
We do.
Okay, we've got a delay going on over here, I'm going to move to a different location to finish my presentation here. It's a little distracting, we're watching on the computer and the sound is coming in later. Okay, so the main two pages that I'm going to be referring to, actually are Page 4 and 5 of the findings, and then I'm going to definitely ask, and 6, 4, 5, and 6, and I'm going to ask that the Board members have Pages 10 and 16 of the packets readily available. Okay, thank you. On Page 4, Findings A, it states that the subject is a parcel is affected by a perennial stream, and I'm not positive what the definition of perennial is, but I think it's important to point out that the stream that borders the back of our lot on the north side, which is also the south side of the Huffman Road easement, is not in its natural banks. That stream was rerouted during the development of the Ocean View subdivision, and it was dug effectively in a drainage ditch in a straight line. If you look on Page number 10, it clearly shows that it's in a straight line right down the bordered edge, it's right on the back of our property lines for several lots down through this, this section of the Huffman Road easement. And the ditch that's there is about four feet wide, and it's about four feet deep, and it has, they're not vertical sides, but it's definitely not a real wide stream bank. It has the resemblance of a drainage ditch, and I went out and checked the water today, and it's about four inches deep flowing in there, and that is very typical. We have lived here since 1989, which is more than 30 years, and we have never seen the water come up more than halfway up of that four-foot-deep trench, in the worst of rainstorms. So I kind of wanted to point that out. Okay, so on Page number 4, Findings A, I got, this stream was relocated to its present location in the early 80s as part of the Ocean View development. It was effectively turned into a drainage ditch along the south edge of the Huffman Road easement. This ditch is about four feet wide and, and four feet deep, and the water's flowing four inches deep today, and that's, and it rarely changes from that in the 30-plus years that we've lived here. Please turn to Page 16 of your packets. If you look on the back of our lot, you can see the line with the X marks through it, that's where our fence is located. The fence was not installed between the property corners, as most people would install a fence. That fence was installed to tie in to the existing corner posts of our neighbors on both sides of us who already had fences erected to that location. So we had a setback to respect that, that stream back there. In fact, my wife has planted a bunch of ferns and stuff to stop erosion, but anyway, that's, that's where our fence is. And then try to visualize that fence having to be relocated to the south side of where they put the 25-foot setback center lines, or setbacks of that, stream setback lines. That effectively cuts our backyard in half. And then try to visualize the shed and the covered storage area, which is in the top left corner of the lot there, the northwest corner, and then try to visualize moving those, relocating those into the yard and not being the utility easements. So one of the things I also need to point out is, there's four utility pedestals that are inside our fence there, two on the top left and two on the top right. The utility companies, that shed was built, or that fence was erected and the sheds were built, in the early 90s, and every one of those utility pedestals has been serviced by the utility companies, and there's never been an objection to them. The, the covered storage area in the northwest corner, there's no door on it, and there's no floor in it, and there's openings for light, and there's a greenhouse-style roof for it light, and there's a gravel floor, and all we've ever got, when utility people come out to service, there's a phone pedestal and a power pedestal in there, was appreciation because they don't have to dig through the snow or work on it in the rain, and they always have access, and we never block access to it with things inside there. And it was basically the same with the two on the other side, but they're not encompassed in an enclosure. One time, I put a note on my door saying they were going to be working on the pedestal, and I removed a section of the fence to give them access, and I was, appreciation was expressed to us for, for doing that, just to make sure they had no kind of additional incumbences to work around. So I just wanted to point that out. I got off track here, trying to visualize, okay? Okay, now, let's move on to, to the next one, because I think that pretty much sums it up, that, you know, moving that fence to the middle of our yard and those structures constitutes way more than just an inconvenience. Okay, now on Page 4, Findings B, it states that denial of this variance would not deprive the property owner of rights commonly enjoyed by others within the same zoning district, nor would the strict application of this code create an undue hardship on the property owner. So when you look at the lots on Page 10, that border, that Furrow Creek that goes along the south side of Huffman Road easement, if you follow the Huffman, if you follow the creek along that, where it turns south and cuts through a lot, you can see that Ocean View developers allocated a complete lot for that green belt on both the north side and the south side of Clippership Court, and then that green belt continued down through there. So they, they allowed setbacks there, but where it ran along our property, they, there was nothing built- there was nothing built in to the setback or no allowance. And thirty-five years after this setback was, ordinance was passed, all of a sudden, it's trying to be enforced on us, and every single one of those lots from the creek, as you head from the west end where the creek cuts off of Huffman Road and cuts through Ocean View subdivision, every single one of those lots, three of them on our left and three more on our right, have fences along the Huffman Road easement and storied sheds back there. And we have a lot of pedestrian traffic back there, and that's why the need for fences is felt by people, because we have a lot of the pedestrian traffic collected to cross the creek, and then there are properties for things, and most everybody has sheds and personal properties back there, and they were uncomfortable with that, and so that's the reason for the sheds.
Mr. Boomerstein?
Yes?
Just let you know you've only got about thirty seconds left.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, well, I better go on the seat. It would be very difficult to say that this hardship was self-imposed after checking with most of the other property owners affected by the sudden strict enforcement of this code, thirty-five years. None of the other property owners as built for their lots showed the stream setback. None of them had heard of it until we took it upon ourselves to inform them. Whose job was it to inform the surveyors? None of the different surveyors that surveyed these lots had that listed on there. So that's pretty much it. I could go on, but I'm gonna stop with that right there. Oh, wait a minute. Findings H, all the seven property owners along the section felt the need to install the fence because of all the traffic back there. We had some vandalism on ours, and, you know, it's just-
Okay.
To try to tell everybody to move their fences to the middle of their yard is not gonna work.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Boomerstein by the board? Does anyone have a question? Okay. Then, let's see, the board members and staff may direct questions. Staff have anything?
Madam Chair, would that be questions for Mr. Boomerstein, or is this time for rebuttal?
It's not, wait a minute, hold on. On conclusion of the presentation, board members and the staff may direct questions to the applicant. Do you have any questions to the applicant?
Through the chair, no questions for the applicant.
Okay, thank you. So the hearing is then open for public testimony, and members of the public have three minutes, and members of, the representatives of groups have five minutes. So Mr. Hop is first up.
Hello?
Good evening. Is this Clark Hop?
It is.
Clark, this is the zoning board calling for your testimony in case 2020-0121. Are you testifying as an individual or a representative of a group?
Individual.
Great. You'll have three minutes to testify. At the conclusion of your testimony, the board may ask you questions. If there are no questions, the phone call will end. If you're ready, you may begin your testimony.
Thank you. So first of all, I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to provide public comment. My name is Clark Hop, for the record. I live at 651 Clipper Ship Court, and I'm calling for public testimony to support the Boomerstein's request for a variance for their lot. And the reason I request, or am supporting that variance is that I do believe that it is an unnecessary hardship from the strict application of this ordinance. I believe that their quality of life, by moving the fence to nearly the middle of their backyard, would significantly impact the quality of their life. I also believe there would be a significant impact to the property value if the full area of their backyard was not to be usable. And I do think that the hardships exist from the condition that are peculiar to this particular property and where it's located, adjacent to the Huffman Reinway and the Furrow Creek drainage. And I do not believe that the hardship is self-created. To be consistent with the intent of this ordinance, as I understand, the purpose was to protect the hydrological nature of the stream, was also to protect, excuse me, I have my notes here, the visual, sorry.
We've got a little less than a minute and a half left.
Okay, so anyway, I don't believe, I see Furrow Creek drainage as just a drainage. In the twenty years that I've lived here, I've seen several fifty-year storms. There's never been an overtopping of the bank. The only flooding issues we've had in the community are with the muni culverts underneath the roads. So I would support this and do believe that it's also a public safety issue that for the Boomersteins to continue to enjoy their backyard, they may not be able to have a fence, which would then expose them to some significant safety issues with the traveling public. So I am definitely in support of the variance and would wish for the board to consider this variance.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Hop by the board? Any questions from the staff? He indicates no. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Laura Lee Smith.
Hello?
Good evening. Is this Laura Lee Smith?
Yes. Hello?
Laura Lee, this is the zoning board calling for your testimony in case 2020-0121.
Okay.
If you could, go ahead and mute, I believe, the TV or another phone?
Yep, I was trying to. Sorry, I'm not too techy, but I think I got it down.
That's quite all right. Laura Lee, are you testifying as an individual or a representative of a group?
As an individual.
Great. You'll have three minutes to testify. At the conclusion of your testimony, the board may ask you questions. If there are no questions, the phone call will end. If you're ready to begin your testimony, you may begin.
Okay. Thank you, guys, for allowing us to have input on this variance that the Boomersteins are seeking for their house. I am also in favor of the variance. I believe that moving that fence and the shed would cut their yard, as Mr. Hop said, in half, and I think that would be an encumbrance to them. I think that would lower their property value, and I think that would put them at a disadvantage compared to the properties on the rest of this lot. I also do think that the fence, and it would also just look funny. In addition to, I thought that would be why it would lower the property value. It wouldn't be one that you would wanna live in. We do ask, I do wanna mention that they keep excellent care of their property. They have just a beautiful yard, and they do take, I don't know, great care. They're excellent neighbors to have, and I do think this would be a hardship in the way that they care for their property. So I would ask for the variance.
Is that it? Is that your testimony?
That's it, yep.
Okay. Are there any questions by the board of Ms. Smith? Ms. Iker?
Thank you. Through the chair, I was remiss in not asking sooner, but I assume that your property, similar to most properties in the Anchorage Bowl area, also, in addition to the public, has visits from wildlife, moose, bears. Can you comment on any other activity up and down the stream that you may have seen over the years?
Are you asking me? I'm sorry.
Yes.
I am. Okay, okay. Yes, I would say that there are moose and bears in our neighborhood. Actually, on the Nextdoor app, just this past week, there was a report of two brown bears in someone's yard. We have a bull moose going around now. It is a frequented area. Thank you.
Anyone else have a question for Ms. Smith? If not, thank you very much. And next up, we have Ron Kincanon.
Hello?
Good evening. Is this Ron Kincanon?
Yes, it is.
Ron, this is the zoning board calling for your testimony in case 2020-0121.
Yes, thank you.
Are you testifying as an individual or a representative of a group?
As an individual.
Great. You'll have three minutes to testify. At the conclusion of your testimony, the board may ask you questions. If there are no questions, the phone call will end. If you're ready, you may begin your testimony now.
Okay, thank you. My name is Ron Kincanon. I live at 631 Clipper Ship Court, 630 Clipper Ship Court. And I am a thirty-nine-year resident and homeowner living directly across the street from Mr. Boomerstein. And so I was actually here when that property was built. And so I'm very familiar with it, and I'm also very familiar with the rerouting of the stream that runs behind it. And that, and then the thirty-nine, almost forty years that I've been here, that stream has never overflowed and come up the banks, now the banks, into the backyards of the houses along. And I'm speaking mostly of the properties that are directly across this creek from me, so I can't speak further downstream, but I don't believe they have as well. I speak as a very concerned taxpayer and customer and municipality, and that I feel like that I'm concerned that the very people that are officiating and adjudicating this matter, that they have, at least in my judgment, have erred, and that would have a very substantial financial impact to the Boomersteins and any property owners, adjacent property owners that would be subject to the same thing. The thing that comes to mind for me is the fact that it seems like Mr. Boomerstein is being unfairly singled out because he wants to improve his property. And that it appears, based on the things that I have learned from talking with others along the way here about this matter, is that it seems that he is the only one that's being asked to meet these very stringent standards, that the other property owners, adjacent property owners, are not being asked to meet these same requirements. And so that begs the question, why not? It would seem to me that with all of the adjacent property owners having very similar, if not the same profile, as to the creek and setbacks and easement and boundaries, why would they not be required to have the same requirements imposed on them? It should be fair and equitable for everybody that's concerned. And as has been already stated, this ditch is really, I think, is being overstated as a hazard in any regard, and that the very, very severe impact that it would have on Mr. Boomerstein would severely diminish the quality of life that they have and would substantially devalue the property as it is today. I can't imagine, imagining where these new boundaries that are being set for fences and their sheds and everything, it would have a substantial impact on their property. And I'm hoping that you, as policymakers,
Mr. McKinnon?
will deal fairly and equally on this matter, and that this thing has been outstanding and largely unknown, the requirements that they're imposing, for almost thirty-five years.
Your time is-
And that, pardon me?
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. McKinnon? Any questions from the board? And seeing none, then, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Susan Cress.
This is Susan Cress.
Good evening, Susan. This is the zoning board calling for your testimony in case 2020-0121.
Yes.
Susan, are you calling, are you testifying as an individual tonight or a representative of a group?
As an individual.
Great. You'll have three minutes to testify. At the conclusion of your testimony, the board may ask you questions. If there are no questions, the phone call will end. You may begin your testimony when you're ready.
Thank you. I am Susan Cress. I live at 601 Clipper Ship Court and am a neighbor of the Boomersteins. I have a similar situation in my own backyard where there is a fence and a shed that are, I suppose, improperly located, according to this new information that I've received. But when this home was built in 1980, the original plat was done in 1979, and that is the information that I used whenever I put a fence up in 2004. And there were no restrictions at that time that I was aware of, according to the information I had. And other than the utilities, and I located my fence and my shed away from the utilities. So in the case of the Boomersteins, their yard is going to be severely impacted if this variance is not granted. And certainly, the hardship of having to relocate, relocate the sheds, cut their yard in half, and relocate the fence would certainly present a hardship for them. Likewise, it would for me too. As has been pointed out, if this variance is not granted, then it would follow that other people along the same section of the drainage ditch would be expected to relocate fences and sheds as well, thus devaluing our property as well. So I am in support of this variance, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Cress? Any questions from the board? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Next up, we have James DiMaggio.
This is Jim DiMaggio.
Good evening. Is this James DiMaggio?
Yes, it is.
James, this is the zoning board calling for your testimony in case 2020-0121.
Great. I'm ready.
Are you testifying as an individual or a representative- Are you testifying as an individual or a representative of a group tonight?
An individual.
Great. You'll have three minutes to testify. At the conclusion of your testimony, the board may ask you questions. If there are no questions, the phone call will end. You may begin your testimony now.
Hey, my name is James DiMaggio. I live at 621 Clippership Court. I'm a Nextdoor neighbor to the Boomer shines. I'd like to state first that their property and their care of the property is exemplary. They're excellent neighbors. They have great shrubbery and lawns, et cetera. And moving along this ditch, which I see in one location called the perennial stream, is not a natural occurring stream. You look at it, it's a straight line, and there are no straight lines in nature, especially not when it comes to water. We've had issues of vandalism and theft, and our fence is the original fence that was put up, and we've improved it. And if this variance does not occur, everybody on our side of the street here, this half a dozen houses, will have to also move fences, as well as sheds, as well as whatever other structures. So, it's not just one person, it's everybody on that side of the street alongside of that ditch. The higher volume that created a problem downstream of us was caused by the introduction of the runoff from the Narragansett Square subdivision. We never had any issue before that. And if this problem, if this was a problem, after the MOA did a full flood study, I'm kind of confused of why there was no notification done back then of, hey, everybody on this side of the street is in noncompliance. We would not want to do that. In our particular case, a garage was built after this study, and it was approved by the municipality, as well as a variance from a utility company to put up the fence. And additionally, I'd like to say that there have been some severe wildlife enclosures. A couple of years ago, a brown bear killed a moose in the back here. Children were using this path to go to school, and the brown bear was protected and it's killed. And it could have created a problem if we did not have fences. The increased amount of traffic through there, people wandering through yards, can significantly impact the quality of life. Could not let the dogs out, et cetera. And I know I'm close to time up, so I will conclude by saying, I think the variance should be granted. Thank you for your time.
Are there any questions for Mr. DiMaggio? Any questions from board members and staff? Okay, thank you, Mr. DiMaggio, for your testimony.
Thank you.
And next up, we have Davis Stewart.
Hello?
Good evening. Is this Davis Stewart?
Yes, it is.
Davis, this is the zoning board calling for your testimony in case 2020-0121. Are you testifying as an individual or a representative of a group?
Individual.
Great. You'll have three minutes to testify. At the conclusion of your testimony, the board may ask you questions. If there are no questions, the phone call will end. If you're ready, you may begin your testimony now.
Thank you. My name is Davis Stewart. I live at 611 Clippership Court, two houses down from Skip. My wife and I moved into this house about four years ago. This is our first home. And, you know, the reason we bought this house, it's kind of a small, quirky house, but it has a beautiful big backyard, and, you know, it's kind of like the big selling point for us. And like everybody else along the creek, our fence backs right up to the creek. We also have a shed that's back there as well. Now, when we bought the house, we had an as-built survey done, and it doesn't indicate anything about a high watermark. And so, my concern here is that I have a deck, for personal concern, is that I have a deck that needs to be built shortly, and it's a second-story deck, so I'm going to need to get a permit to have it replaced. And I don't, you know, I have a feeling I'm going to have to go through the same thing Skip's going through right now, in that, you know, the, we're going to be forced to move our fence in. And this would significantly devalue our property by cutting our backyard in half, and it would impact our quality of life. And, you know, I feel for Skip and Cheryl. I think they're kind of, you know, this would really hurt and impact their yard. The fence is, I think, important for safety from wildlife. There's also people constantly walking around back behind, on the other side of the creek back there. And, yeah, I just, you know, like Skip was saying, it's a deep ditch, and, you know, we've only been here four years, but I've never seen that get more than a foot or two high. And so, I don't see it ever, I don't know, ever breaking that, breaking the bank and coming over into our yard. So, that's kind of all I have to say. I've got a five-month-old screaming at me right now, so I should probably get back to her. But thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Are there any questions for Mr. Stewart by the board? Okay. Anyone? Not the staff. So, thank you, Mr. Stewart, for your testimony.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Could you start that again? I want to go back a little bit. I did not have all the information I should have had when I talked about the right of appeal. And I need to go back over that because I misstated. So, every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face that it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to Superior Court. So, 30 days. And, moving on, so the public testimony has concluded. The petitioner does not have any rebuttal time left, so we are going to close the public hearing, and the matter rests with the board. Can I have a positive motion, please? Pretty please? Ms. Iker?
Yes, in case number 2020-0120, I move for a variance from ANC 21.07.020B9 stream setbacks to allow a covered storage area and fence to encroach no more than 19 feet into a required 25-foot stream protection setback, and to allow a storage shed to encroach no more than 10 feet into a required 25-foot stream protection setback for Farrow Creek, subject to staff recommendations 1 through 3 in our packet on page 6.
Is there a second? Mr. Lang, seconds. Ms. Iker, would you speak to your motion, please?
Yes. With regards to findings A, I find that there does exist exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances of the subject property for two reasons. One, its immediate adjacency to Farrow Creek, and the fact that that creek was rerouted to somewhat the detriment, or at least the encroachment, on the existing properties as they were already existing in the subdivision. And the fact that that was done for the benefit of subsequent development downstream. I also find that a 20-foot drainage and utility easement also constitutes a fairly exceptional circumstance of the subject property. With regards to findings B, I do find that strict application of the code would create an undue hardship of the property owner and deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by others, for the simple fact that, number one, securing the property from wildlife, especially predatory wildlife of bears and sometimes dangerous moose, and just simply securing your property from trespassers is a right that is commonly enjoyed throughout the municipality, and such that offense is a pretty necessary right to be able to secure one's property. Additionally, we're not talking about encroachments that are of substantial nature, and I understand staff comments earlier with regards to impervious surface coverage, but we're talking about a shed that doesn't have a floor and another shed that's up on pilings. And the testimony given was that there was not adequate room to relocate these structures. With regards to findings C, I do find that the hardship is perhaps somewhat self-imposed, in that the property owners constructed these structures, but I find that not only the property owners, but all of their neighbors provided testimony that the rerouting of Farrow Creek and the easements that were then put on their property perhaps were not publicly noticed or made to their knowledge, or were made after the fact that these structures already existed. And for that reason, I find that that's, findings for standard C is met. I agree with staff with regards to findings D and E. With regards to findings F, I do, as I mentioned previously, find that not having a fence does adversely affect the health and safety of welfare of the people in the property, or the property owners, and does not adversely affect the adjacent property owners. With regards to G, I do agree with the findings that staff articulated. And with regards to H, again, I find that the request for the variance that the property owners are seeking is fairly minimal, and at least a minimum for what is a reasonable use of the property. And for that, I plan to support my motion.
Thank you. The staff has asked to be recognized, so, Mr. Yelly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to clarify something, because I believe I had a rebuttal time in there.
You did, and I skipped you. Sorry.
That's all right, Madam Chair. No worries. I just wanted to point out that the creek was indeed rerouted, but it was rerouted as part of the subdivision when it was established in 1979. It predates the development of any of the lots within the subdivision. The stream setback ordinance was established in 1985. That placed a 25-foot stream protection setback on this parcel, as well as adjoining parcels. The owner, the current owner, did purchase the property in 1989, after the stream setback ordinance was in effect. There does not appear to be any impact to the assessed value of the property, given that these setbacks were already in place prior to when the current owner took ownership. And we're also not talking about any loss of property here. This is just simply talking about removing structures, or having the ability to place structures within a stream protection setback. And I'd also like to point the board's attention to the purpose and scope of a variance in code, which is stated, "It is not intended that variances be granted merely to remove inconveniences or financial burdens that the requirements of this title may impose on property owners in general. Rather, it is intended to provide relief where the requirements of this title render the land difficult or impossible to use because of some unique physical attribute of the property itself." So, that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. In light of the staff's rebuttal, are you still on board there, Ms. Iker?
Through the, or Madam Chair, yes, I am. I may need to rethink findings A or B, but I'd like to defer to Ms. Everton or other board members, perhaps, to share those comments, and I will chime in after having the benefit of further discussion.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Emmerton, would you speak to the motion, please?
Yes, I can. You had initially said Commissioner Lang was the second. I can be the second, though. He beat me, and he beat me to it.
I'll acquiesce.
I actually was intending on supporting the motion as well. I do appreciate staff's comments. I do tend to agree with Commissioner Iker and her findings that she has brought forth. We've gotten a lot of testimony, and it seems like the whole neighborhood was unaware of what's required. And I think that's concerning. And I also find it concerning that the as-built weren't showing this as something that was required, and for most the as-built that were built, which is interesting, given what staff said, that this was all done prior. So, I'm sorry, I'm still with Ms. Iker. I'm struggling, but trying to get my thoughts in order based on the latest rebuttal from staff. But I do still tend leaning, I am leaning towards supporting the motion. I would also be open to additional discussion by the board if there is any more. I agree with the findings that Ms. Iker brought forth, though, and I find that they do make a compelling argument to support the case, support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lang, do you want to provide any clarity here?
Madam Chair, thank you. I will be supporting the motion. I concur that the standards have been met. One thing that's kind of disconcerting, I just read through the section of code that discusses the wetlands, or the, excuse me, the stream setbacks, and there's nothing that explicitly prohibits fences in that portion of the code, and I believe that that is a reasonable exception for the reasons that Ms. Iker stated. And I will be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify?
This is Dave. I have a comment if I could.
Okay, go.
Through the Chair, I'm just looking at that 10-foot utility easement again, which is included in the square footage in the backyard, and I'm thinking of, if you've got a permanent structure and you want to put it in there, you can't. So, I mean, unless you go to the utility company. So, we haven't established that the utility company would actually allow it, so it really cuts down on the area if you put the utility easement and the creek easement in there. It really confines the space. So, I think that because of the utilities in the creek, it really does limit their use of the property. So, I really think I'm going to support it as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. Anybody else? Mr. Smith?
I have to admit that I do not intend to support this motion. And for conversation for the record here, I want to remind everyone that the approval or granting of this variance would be permanent for this lot, and then set precedence for all the other lots. And while I do greatly appreciate all of the public testimony and the neighbors' concerns, the reality is all of these requirements existed prior the reality is all of these requirements existed prior to any of the work done on the lots. And while I heard it referred to as a drainage ditch, it is still flowing water specifically recognized as, for what it is, by the MOA and labeled, and those stream setbacks exist for a reason. In other variance requests where it has been Title 21-related and for the protection of the community, and we've been able to grant those when they've made sense, this really is about the watershed, and it does not have a chance to speak or testify back. I fully recognize the reduction in potential yards that they may have, but that always was there, and there's a real reason for the watershed requirement. So I think I just wanted to share that portion of it. I feel for every one of the landowners in this difference from what it may have been before, but it doesn't change any of the requirements. Those were always there, and we have to keep that in mind. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smythe. Anybody else? I think that we've heard from everyone that wishes to speak, and I'm going to say that I'm not going to support this motion either. Any setback has the potential to affect the people there, and all the streams in the municipality have stream setbacks, and they're there for a reason. And just because Farrow Creek has been rerouted doesn't mean that it's any less important than if it was flowing in its natural banks, and I'm not going to support the motion, so. Ms. Iker, is there, are you still okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I am still here, and I just want to thank the rest of the board members for their comments. I am still intend to support the motion, and I do so in my prior findings, but also with the fact that each variance request is unique in its nature. And I find that a fence and a very small shed and a covered area with no flooring to be pretty low-impact and reasonable request for these variances. Again, I've served on this board eight years, and we've seen all sorts of variances. Most of them are, in fact, much more permanence in nature and much more difficult to try and justify after the fact. This one, to me, seems reasonable, and I do intend to support the motion. Thank you all for, my fellow board members, for helping add to the discussion. I greatly value your opinions and insight.
Okay, if everyone is all right, we'll go ahead and vote.
Mr. Hale?
Yeah, I'm not on Zoom, so I'll just say yes.
Ms. Savina? Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Ms. Emmerton?
Yes.
Ms. Iker?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Smythe and Acting Chairman Kay have voted no. Thank you.
The motion required five positive votes, and it received six, so the motion is, the motion passes and the variance is granted. Which brings us to the second case, which is case 2020-0123. I'm not sure if I'm going to murder this or not, but the applicant's, Mr. Tabillos, and would like to hear from the staff about the sufficiency of notice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On August 28th, 2020, a total of 226 public hearing notices were mailed in accordance with the procedures of Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Chapter 3, Subsection 020H Notice. Thank you.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none, will the staff please present the case?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request for a variance from Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Chapter 6, Subsection 020A, Table 21 dot 06 dash 1, Table of Dimensional Standards Residential Districts, to allow an arctic entryway to encroach 1.5 feet into a required 20-foot front yard setback. This encroachment was discovered during a zoning compliance evaluation for building permit R20 dash 1477, applied for by the owner to reconstruct an addition on the south side of their home. The arctic entryway shown on the provided as-built dated 7/2/2020 appears to have been constructed without a building permit. According to municipal records, the last building permit applied for on this property was in 2003, and that was permit 03 dash 1157. That's included under supplemental information, the as-built. It involved the construction of the existing addition to the backside of the home. The as-built provided with permit 031157 did not show the addition of the arctic entryway on the front of the home, and no encroachments were present on the property. The planning department has conducted a review of the application and presents the following findings for the board's consideration. For standard A, we do not believe the standard is met. The subject parcel is not affected by any extraordinary physical circumstances such as streams, wetlands, topography, or unique geometry. The subject parcel is of conforming size, and it can accommodate an attached single-family home within a conforming location. There are no other physical circumstances which affect this lot. For standard B, we do not believe the standard is met. The denial of this variance would not deprive the property owner of rights commonly enjoyed by others within the same zoning district, nor would the strict application of code create an undue hardship on the property owner. Arctic entryways are common amenities within a northern climate. However, removing the encroachment of the arctic entryway does not deprive the owner of the rights commonly enjoyed by others within the same district. The owner will still be able to make full lawful use of the existing single-family home. For standard C, we do believe the standard is met. The hardship does not appear to be self-imposed because the arctic entryway was constructed by a previous owner. The encroachment was discovered as part of a zoning compliance review for current building permit R20 dash 1477, applied for by the applicant to reconstruct an existing south-side addition of their home. The arctic entryway shown on the provided as-built dated 7/2/2020 appears to have been constructed without a building permit. According to municipal records, the last building permit applied for on this property was in 2003, and it involved the construction of the addition to the backside of the home. The as-built provided with this building permit did not show the addition of the arctic entryway in the front of the home, and no other encroachments were present on the property. For standard D, the standard is met. Given the character history and current zoning of the neighborhood, it does not appear at this time that the granting of this variance will adversely affect the use of adjacent properties. Neighboring property owners will retain the ability to make full lawful use of their land. Standard E, we do believe the standard is met. The requested variance will not change the character of the R2A zoning district in which the petition site is located. The R2A district is primarily intended for single-family and two-family dwellings. Municipal services are provided. Granting this variance to encroach within the front yard setback will not permit either principal or accessory use other than what is already permitted under Anchorage Municipal Code. Standard F, we do believe the standard is met. It does not appear that this encroachment will result in any negative impacts to the health or safety of the people of the municipality. This encroachment will not affect any public facilities, utilities, or environmentally sensitive areas. Standard G, the standard is met. The standard is not applicable to attached single-family residents. And for standard H, the standard is partially met. The arctic entryway is a commonly enjoyed amenity among homes within a northern climate, but it is not essential to make use of this parcel for a single-family attached dwelling. If the encroachment were to be removed, the remaining structure would still serve as a single-family home without any impediments to its use. Considering this analysis and the variance standards, all eight of which must be substantially met in order for a variance to be granted, the department finds that standards A and B are not met, and standard H is partially met, and standards C, D, E, F, and G are met. Therefore, the department recommends denial of the variance. However, if after a public hearing, the board finds that all eight standards are substantially met, then the approval should be subject to conditions 1, 2, and 3, shown on page 5 of the staff packet. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff by the board members? Seeing none, is the applicant online? Mr. Tabillos?
Yes.
It's time for your presentation. You have 10 minutes, and if you want to have the right of rebuttal, you'll need to reserve part of that time.
Okay. I would like to thank the zoning board members for attending on my application of my variance. My property was built in 1984 in Zero Lot Mine, and I purchased this house in summer of 1999 from the first owner. Before I purchased this property, the arctic entry of my house was already installed by the seller, by the first owner. Same with my neighbors, we all have arctic entries. I just found out that this year, when I applied for the permit of my proposed building, 12 feet by 12, 12 feet by 21 feet extension in the back of my house, that my arctic entry is a bit too close to the road. According to the municipality of property, it's supposed to be 20 feet away from the road, but because of the presence of my arctic entry, it's now 18.5 feet. The only way that I could get my permit of my proposed building in the back of my house is to apply for the dimensional variance in this manner that was installed before I purchased this property. The effect of granting the variance will keep the uniformity and beauty of our house in my neighborhood. All my neighbors have all arctic entries, and all have the same designs. Also, granting the variance will keep me continue constructing my proposed extension in the back of my house. The analysis of how the proposal meets the variance standards as highlighted in the application. The exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances of the subject property are, there is no streams, wetlands, or slope making the circumstances unacceptable. However, I purchased the property 21 years ago, knowingly inherited the problem of a 1.5 feet encroachment from the previous owner. This is Zero Lot Mine home, so my nearest neighbor has the same issue as well as the other two houses on my same street. The extraordinary circumstance is my house 27.5 feet from the faith street, which maintains the intended 20 feet zoning front setback. The strict application code creates an exceptional or undue hardship on the property owner. Without the variance, it will be unpleasant to see that my property is the only one has no arctic entry in my neighborhood. The hardship is not self-imposed. As the owner of the property, we did not self-impose the hardship. Before my wife and I bought the property, the arctic entry was already installed. This tiny area is good for blocking the coldness of winter, and it helps the living room warmer. The variance will not adversely affect the adjacent property. No adjacent property is affected through this request. Does not shade or impact a view from the other properties or the roadway. The variance does not change the character of the zoning district. The variance does not change the zoning. The variance does not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people and the community members' health. Persons with disabilities are provided with access required by the ADA and reasonably accommodation. We believe the request for this variance provides a reasonable accommodation for this property to allow us a tiny space for winter coldness. We believe the prior owner of my property and the rest of my neighborhood had the same opinion about the purpose of this arctic entry, to minimize the coldness of winter inside the home. In case there is a fire or emergency in the home, the arctic entry should also be wide enough for unindividible to both safety exist and stand away from the home until we can call for help and be assisted off the arctic entry safely. The variance granted is the minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land. We believe the request for the variance is both reasonable and minimum variance request. The arctic entry was already installed by the first owner before we bought the property in 1999. In summary, I am asking the zoning board members to approve the dimensional variance request to allow my existing 8.5 feet front setback encroachment for my arctic entry to the main road built by the first owner, which we bought in year 1999 from them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tabillos. Are there any questions from the board for the applicant? Any questions at all? Okay. Seeing none, do I? The staff, does the staff have any questions? No, the staff does not. So, we'll open, well, there's no one that signed up to testify, no one from the public that signed up to testify. And Mr. Tabillos, you still have almost three and a half minutes if there's anything else that you would like to say. Mr. Tabillos?
I've got nothing to say but to ask the zoning board members to approve my dimensional variance request.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does the staff have anything to say?
No rebuttal, Madam Chair.
Okay, that being the case, may I have a positive motion in this case? Case 2020-0123. Positive motion. I do it that I'm the chair, and I can't gamble. Mr. Smythe, surely you can help us out here. Ms. Emmerton? Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Smythe and a second by Mr. Quinn. Mr. Smythe, would you speak to your motion, please?
Yes, in the case of 2020-0123 variance from Code AMC 2106020A, dimensional variance standard allowing residential district to allow an arctic entryway to encroach 1.5 feet into a required 20-foot front yard setback, subject to conditions 1 through 3, shown on Page 5 of the staff report. I do intend to support my motion. I believe that all eight standards are substantially met. I think that A, and substantially met being that the extraordinary physical circumstance in this case is the fact that it was already there when the property was purchased. It was built by someone else, and there's been no negative impacts because of that, that I think the strict application of this is undue hardship because it would require tearing down a portion of this person's house and relative to everyone else, all of his neighbors and what they have. I agree with staff findings on C, that that is met, that it's not, oh, I'm sorry. Let's see, I got mixed up here in my A, B. The physical circumstances, yeah, that the strict application would deprive the applicant. Hardship not self-imposed, C, I agree with staff findings on that. And with the staff on D, E, F, G, and H, I think that this is substantially met, not partially met, because it allows them to continue the planned use of the land like all the other neighbors. And that's all I have to say about my motion.
Mr. Quinn?
I will also be supporting the motion with the two findings that are most critical being A and B, seeing as how the petitioner did inherit of the problem and was not aware of it when he purchased the property.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Any other discussion from the board members? I too am going to support the motion. I think that a foot and a half is de minimis in its nature, particularly the fact that all of the neighbors or a good share of the neighbors have arctic entries as well, and a foot and a half into a 20-foot front yard setback is not that much. There's still plenty of room there for the municipality to store snow, and it doesn't negatively impact, and hasn't negatively impacted the other members of the municipality for many years. And with that being said, I guess we'll vote.
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Acting Chairman Kay?
Yes.
Ms. Savina?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Ms. Emmerton?
Yes.
Ms. Iker?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Thank you. So unanimously passed, and the variance is approved. Okay, that ends the, that ends the public hearings, no reports, board member comments. I'd just like to mention that this is Stephanie Iker's last meeting, and we, she has served a long, long time, and we're glad that she did, and we're sorry to see you go.
Thank you very much. I can sincerely say it's been my pleasure to serve with many of you, and I would welcome the opportunity for you guys to keep me on the shortlist if you need additional board members at a point in time in the future. And to not leave this board short, because I have served on years where it has been short, I do believe we have a person in the queue that I've worked with for several years, that's very familiar with real estate development, who will also be happy to take my place, or anyone else that the board deems fit. So, from the bottom of my heart, thank you very much. I've enjoyed the past eight years with you all, and I look forward to continuing to serve more time with you in the future.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, also move.
And Mr. Lang seconds, so we're adjourned.